Good evening, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council for Monday, September the 21st, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting in order. We will begin with a roll call, please.
Jeff Arnold?
Here.
Chris Campbell?
Here.
Joe Reeser?
Here.
Steve Black?
Here.
George Sleeper?
Here.
Letitia Wilkins?
Here.
Scott Smith?
Here.
That takes us to the approval of the agenda. I will like to promote, or sorry, propose a change. Item 11 is the Police Chiefs Update and Life Safety Awards. We would like to move that up from item 11 to item 4A, please. Other than that, if I could get that motion, that'd be great.
This is Jeff Arnold. I'll approve the agenda with the noted changes.
Steve Black, I'll second.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yeah.
Reeser?
Yes.
Black?
Yeah.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Item 4 is an update from our County Commissioner, Gail Patterson-Gladney. Is she on the phone? All right, let's patch her in.
Hi, Gail. You're on with the council. If you go ahead with your update.
Okay, well, ma'am, please. Hello, this is Gail Patterson-Gladney, Van Buren County Commissioner for District 1, and I have some news from the county. Because Van Buren County does not have adequate space for the selection of a jury, the Commissioners approve renting the Lawton Community Center, and the center is large enough for the selection process to comply with COVID-19 requirements. All courthouse security will be in place at the center, and the rent is $375 per day. The Commissioners also approved the purchase of an automatic license plate reader for $20,000 using money from the Drug Deficiency Fund. And this purchase was requested by the Michigan State Police and the Van Buren County Prosecutor. This equipment will be used on I-94 in Van Buren County. Approval was also given to renew the service agreement with the Domestic Violence Coalition for $25,000. And the DVC provides counties with assistance in filing personal protection orders, crisis intervention, and other necessary services. It is a bilingual organization. And then I just wanted to let all of you know, and maybe you can share with those who may be in need of food at this time, there's going to be a food giveaway for Van Buren County residents, and it's going to be at the Lawrence Township Hall. It's a drive-through, and then that's going to be at 10 o'clock on September 30th. The address is 411 North Paul Paul Street. So anyone who's eligible, who would like to get food at this time, can just go to the Town Hall and just drive through. Are there any questions?
I've got a lot of head nods.
Yes, I have a question.
Hold on, I got Letitia.
Oh, okay, yes, Letitia.
Hi, Gail. I was interested in that information about the food giveaway. Is there a flyer somewhere, post-it, where I can kind of get it out to people? Or do you have it on Facebook or anything?
No, I don't have a flyer. It was mentioned at the Southwest Michigan Community Action Agency, and they have a website, but I can try to get it in write, something in writing, and send it to Travis, or to the city manager.
Okay.
She could get it out. If that would be okay.
Yes, that would be good.
Okay. Okay, but Southwest Michigan Community Action Agency does have a website, and so if it's not easily viewed on that, then they will be able to send me something to send out. Okay, and thank you for your interest.
All right. Very good. I see no other questions. All right, thanks, Gail. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the Police Chief Update and Life Safety Awards. We have Chief Thompson here to join us.
I'm the Mayor of the County Council. I wanted to start with an update, and then I have some department awards. Is this better?
Want to come up? Thanks, Lightover. Jump in there. Go ahead.
All right, is this a little better? Okay, again, thank you. I'd like to start by providing an update from the Police Department, followed by the presentation of some department awards for four officers who are here. In regards to training, each officer of the South Haven Police Department will be participating in de-escalation intervention and force mitigation training. This course is not about traditional law enforcement ideas, but rather focused more on interpersonal understanding of others and human behavior. The goal is to strengthen officers' abilities to mitigate the need for force by employing skilled communication strategies and efforts to calm, deflect, and diffuse emotions. The ultimate goal is to help guide officers to lower the temperature of potentially physical encounters and better assist in avoiding legitimately avoidable uses of force. De-escalation, which is common now in media and everywhere, is not a phrase, word, or a tactic, but rather a goal. Also, in October, four of our officers will be completing the required emergency driving training that we do at the Gingerman Raceway, so that is also upcoming for this fall. I have an update on our homicide investigation. As many of you read in a press release from August 20th of 2020, the South Haven Police Department responded to a 911 call and ultimately arrested an individual, Randy Hallstead, for open murder and habitual offender. The South Haven Police Department officers involved in the case have all done outstanding work in areas of the investigation. We are fortunate to have several of our officers with expertise in many aspects involved in death investigations, including crime scene analysis and forensic evaluations. I've had many questions as to why the Police Department hasn't released more specifics yet about this case, and the answer is that it is important, especially in cases where one individual is dead and another faces up to the rest of his life in prison, to protect the integrity of such a serious case until the justice system has made its determination. And after that has been completed, I can provide more details after that time. And then just following with what Gail Gladney was speaking of in reference to the Domestic Violence Coalition, Heather Barr, who is a volunteer advocate, provided an update to some more of the services offered by the DVCI. In the past, the services have been somewhat limited for incidents that occur after normal business hours, nights, weekends, holidays. They have a new protocol, which was provided to all the chiefs in Van Buren County that now includes a 24/7, 365-day-year services to victims of domestic violence. Advocates will be able to respond to calls from the police, hospitals, or dispatch. Goals of the advocacy services include making immediate contact with victims in person whenever it's safe to do so. Advocacy members listen, provide information, provide support, offer choices, and help advocate on the victim's behalf. The changes in protocol implemented by the Domestic Violence Coalition appear to provide better clarity and the availability to the services that they offer. And then finally, last but not least, I would, I'll ask the officers to come up individually, but I have four officers here who are going to be awarded department awards. Okay, first, I would like Sergeant Patrick Carlato to step forward. On August 27th of 2020, Sergeant Patrick Carlato responded to a one-car accident at 73rd Street in Phoenix. Upon his arrival, Sergeant Carlato found a vehicle off the roadway surrounded by a group of people. He observed that the driver was unresponsive, and all the doors to the vehicle were locked. Sergeant Carlato deployed his baton and broke a window to gain access into the vehicle to render aid. He immediately checked the unresponsive driver for a pulse and found none, and also noticed that the driver's face was turning blue. Sergeant Carlato pulled the driver from the car and immediately began administering CPR. Cycles of CPR, rescue breathing, and Narcan were all administered, and finally, a pulse was obtained. Sergeant Carlato's immediate lifesaving efforts illustrate that every second counts. Thanks to Sergeant Carlato's efforts, the driver survived. Sergeant Patrick Carlato's quick, decisive actions exemplify what it means to serve and protect. He saved the life of an individual who has received a second chance, which in some instances does not happen. Therefore, the South Haven Police Department bestows the lifesaving ribbon and uniform bar to Sergeant Patrick Carlato.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you.
Very good. Next, Sergeant Adam DeBoer and Officer Kevin Wildy. Would you like to step forward? On June 23rd of 2020, Sergeant Adam DeBoer and Officer Kevin Wildy responded to a 911 call of shots fired at an occupied residence in South Haven Township. Inside this residence were several family members, including children. Luckily, none were injured. Sergeant DeBoer noticed a vehicle leaving the area of the scene, conducted a traffic stop, and located the two firearms used in the shooting at the residence. The driver was arrested and is subsequently facing attempted murder charges. It was found that over a dozen rounds had been fired at the residence. Information as to additional individuals involved remains ongoing. Sergeant DeBoer's quick, instinctive actions led to the apprehension of an individual posing a serious danger to the community, who ultimately faced consequences for his action through the justice system. On that night, there were only two officers working, Sergeant DeBoer and Officer Wildy. Officer Wildy quickly responded to provide assistance to Sergeant DeBoer and safely apprehending and arresting the suspect, and then from there, also processed the entire crime scene. Both Sergeant DeBoer and Officer Wildy's quick and dedicated response to this call for service resulted in the utmost protection and service to the community. Therefore, the South Haven Police Department bestows the Distinguished Service Medal to Sergeant Adam DeBoer and to Officer Kevin Wildy. Good job. Next, Detective Ryan Myers. In July of 2019, Detective Ryan Myers received a complaint from Child Protective Services regarding a criminal sexual assault involving two young girls, ages seven and nine. Over the course of almost a year, Detective Myers inducted an exhaustive and often disturbing investigation into this incident. He spent time with interviews of the victims, contacts with the family, interviewing witnesses, and keeping the prosecutor's office apprised on the status of the case. He drafted and executed search warrants that resulted in the seizure of evidence paramount for the case. When the warrant for the suspect's arrest was finally issued, he fled to another state to avoid prosecution. Detective Myers utilized resources and law enforcement contacts to locate the suspect in Virginia, where he was apprehended by the United States Marshals and extradited back to Michigan. The suspect ended up taking a plea and was sentenced to a lengthy prison sentence. The suspect in this case was the biological grandfather of these two little girls. Detective Myers demonstrated great professionalism, in particular diligence to this case, which is among the most disturbing and emotionally draining this department or any police department handles. His dedication to resolve to bring the suspect to justice sets a far high for all the South Haven Police Department and represents the law enforcement profession in an exemplary manner. His work has prevented a predator from preying on more victims. Therefore, the South Haven Police Department bestows the Distinguished Service Medal award.
Thank you.
And I have one, one last award. Detective Keane got busy with something he was working on with the drug team. He was not able to make it tonight. So I at least want to, to read his award, and we'll present that to him possibly at the next meeting. Detective Lucas Keane is the first South Haven Police Department narcotics detective assigned to the Van Buren County Drug Team. Now a multi-jurisdictional team consisting of officers from the Van Buren County Sheriff's Department and the South Haven Police Department. This team focuses on local drug issues that greatly impact the South Haven community. Beginning in May through August of this year, Detective Keane began investigating a local dealer who was selling heroin and fentanyl to individuals in South Haven. These drugs in particular have been taking the lives of many, and the Police Department has been responding to dozens of overdoses a year, necessitating our officers to now carry Narcan. Through Detective Keane's and the Van Buren County Drug Team's efforts, this local drug dealer of heroin and fentanyl was arrested on multiple felony charges relating to the sale of these deadly drugs. Detective Keane's resolved to address this issue, and the great teamwork displayed amongst the team represents the Police Department's efforts well and is to be commended. Therefore, the South Haven Police Department bestows the Professional Excellence Certificate to Detective Lucas Keane. Thank you. Are there any questions, or...? Thank you. Sure. Do you want to take a, like a clog and recess, or you want to just step out?
I think we're doing it right up here, so, right here. Sure, wherever you want. So if they're viewing public, give us two minutes, we're gonna get a photo.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do it by the flag and, okay.
I'd wear your mask, sir.
What did you say?
I'd wear the mask.
Wear the mask?
Okay.
We're gonna up this one side here. Yeah.
Chief, is it me?
Yeah, get the chief up. Nice try.
I didn't hear.
Okay, that's nice. So here, please, Letitia. That way, six, four, nine. That's good. Are you here, please? Thank you very much. You can do.
Hold on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Right back. Thirty seconds. I want to click outdoor on. All right, my man. Okay. Our police officers are the best. Consent agenda, items A through E.
George Sleeper, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
Jeff Arnold, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Campbell?
Yeah.
Reeser?
Yes.
Black?
Yeah.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. That takes us to old business. The city council will be asked to receive an update on the grant application to the Economic Development Administration for a standpipe replacement project.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just an update to the council to give us, give you our, our standing on our progress with this EDA grant. I have Jim Hettinger here, who's been assisting us with the grant application. He's been making multiple calls, filling out documents, preparing narratives for this, for this grant. Obviously, this is coming down from the CARES Aid, I'm sorry, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, so the CARES Act. Michigan was going to, is receiving $30 million. However, only 20 of that is for local communities for infrastructure work. We've been talking with the USDA, EDA, about who is the most appropriate agency to be applying for this. Also, our initial thoughts were that this would be a $5.5 million grant that we've received, but to be competitive, I think we found that we'd have to lower that 5.5 to 2 point, 2 point, just 2 million. So I'll leave that to Jim to give us a brief update and answer any questions you may have.
Come on in.
Good evening. We've talked about this a little bit before, but you will recall on March 27th, Congress passed and the President signed the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. The act contained allocations to local units of government for communities disproportionately impacted by the coronavirus situation. And as you may also recall, back in April and May, the Visitor Bureau, for example, reported up to a 90% drop in bookings between this year and last year in April and May. That was especially severe when you consider the city has laid out tens of thousands of dollars in unanticipated expenses dealing with the high water issues. Brian Desette, at the time, asked us to pursue an application on behalf of South Haven. The city's capital improvement list contained the priority project of rehabilitating the city's water distribution system. The project would involve demolition of the deteriorating standpipe near Walgreen and general improvements designed to serve the customers of the South Haven Area Water and Sewer Authority. That would be three townships in addition to the city. The overall cost of the project was $6.5 million. In particular, the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration was allocated $1.5 billion to be granted to communities suffering the adverse coronavirus impact. We began the application process seeking at first up to $5 million. The EDA traditionally has pretty strict match requirements, but in this case, they were relaxed. So we thought we might be able to capture up to 5 million, but then, as the interim city manager's already reported to you, the allocations diminished, and we were advised to scale back our request. At the same time, that was really, I think, the first of three significant changes. As she mentioned, Michigan would only get 20 million out of this under the program. And this was one of the first challenges, I think, that really caused us to step back and... The interim city manager, learning about this, said to me, "Why don't you go find the other 4.5 million?" So I've started to do that. A second change was suggested just recently, though, by the feds, the Economic Development Administration, and the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and that was for matching requirements. It might be better off if SHASA, the South Haven Area Water and Sewer Authority, where the applicant in the city becomes a co-applicant. Although Public Works Director Bill Hunter has been working and keeping SHASA informed of this, the recommendation means that we'll have to fully brief them and seek their approval in the form of a resolution to proceed. The third change was kind of close from the other two, where to find the other 4.5 million. We've investigated the private sector for opportunities under the Community Reinvestment Act. As you may know, federally chartered banks are required to undertake certain behaviors of a charitable nature, the resurrection of a deteriorating neighborhood, the purchase of special equipment or something for a municipality. All of those are acts, are behaviors that would be to the credit of lending institution under the Community Reinvestment Act. This is a federal requirement, so banks that are regulated by the feds have their Community Reinvestment Act plans reviewed annually. We developed a request for interest on the part of area lending institutions to see if they would be in the loan grant business to help us get this project. The request for interest has been produced and may be sent out in the next two weeks, but before we get too carried away, we wanted City Finance to thoroughly analyze the documents and make any changes that might be appropriate. More importantly, and recently, we've met with the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Division, and they've offered assistance in the possible form of a forty-year loan at one point five percent. They will also coordinate efforts with the EDA. So if we're successful in, in gaining that two million dollar grant, we'd be on the hook for four million, but at forty-year payback at one point five percent. For the immediate future, uh, we are organizing a general meeting between the EDA and the U.S. Department of Agriculture and, and city people, uh, to decide on the, the final application strategy. But I think we've made some good progress, particularly with the U.S. Department of Agriculture. We can pretty much say that the project will get done. Uh, it may not be done with a grant, but, um, the U.S. Department of Agriculture representative told us they'd be willing to finance the entire project if we found ourselves in a position where that, uh, that would become necessary. So that's pretty much where we are. The coordination meeting will take place in the next two weeks. Um, and, uh, we will go from there. And I will attempt to answer any questions you may have.
When we think we'll hear back on the actual EDA, the original one that, that has the limited dollars in the state, the twenty million, I mean, we're still in an application process, but we just, when do we think we'll hear on that?
Uh, well, we have submitted our letter of interest and our narrative to the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission. That's had been received. We, we've worked with them. But based on what we heard, um, with the two agencies about flip-flopping and the city becoming a co-applicant and Shawson taking the lead, I don't think it disadvantages us. It just changes who's in the primary of the applicant. So we're still in good standing.
Very good. Jim, as always, thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, very good. Next, item seven. City council will be asked to consider action authorizing the interim city manager to award a contract to Compton, Inc. in the amount of five hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-three cents for the street resurfacing project, tentatively scheduled to begin on March twenty twenty-one with a substantial completion date of May fourteen, twenty twenty-one, and final completion on May the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
You want a motion or do you want to just dive in?
Nope, I want a motion.
This is Steve Schlag. I'll make a motion to, uh, authorize the interim city manager to award the contract to Compton, Inc. as stated.
This is Joe Reese. I'll second it.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second. Kate?
Sure. Uh, council, this is, uh, for funding for re-street resurfacing projects. If you haven't been down Hubbard, uh, Prospect Street, uh, it's pretty terrible down there. So this would be occurring, uh, later this, I'm sorry, next spring. And what we're looking at doing is, uh, resurfacing, removing and replacing the surface course on Hubbard Street, installing barrier fair ramps for compliance with ADA and performing minor repairs to the storm system and roadway. Um, the work on Michigan Avenue Prospect requires a partial reconstruct, widen the road, install curb and gutter, storm catch, and a storm outlet to the ravine. Uh, do note that the work will also require rebuilding the slope from the back of the curb to the ravine bottom. So you've got this work coming in content, continent, local company, and a substantial completion table around Memorial Day.
I want, I want the same tone all the way down, not the metal front.
I think someone has their microphone on.
There we go. Perfect. Um, okay, that's perfect. Why don't we just, I, the public reminder, six three seven zero seven seven seven.
Yes.
Um, if we'd like, uh, any, I don't know for the public, if you'd like to call and make any comments on this project. Um, while we're waiting for the public comments, any council questions on this one? I know Steve, this was one, if you had a question on before, but is your question answered? You good with the date change? I got ahead now. Good. Any other council questions? Joe, what do you got?
Just a simple question. Was this already in the budget?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Thanks.
And then we will be, I know I'm going to have, um, we'll have Bill Hunter work with us to make sure at the end of this year, we get an update on our street priority list, where we're at, where we're at with that road millage, and I'm going to be talking to everybody. I'd like to have a heart-to-heart about one day creating a permanent road millage fund because our twenty years can run out. So that'll be a discussion for the end of this year. Any public comments called in?
No comments, sir.
Everyone must want their roads fixed, which is good. If there's no other city council comments, I see none. Um, and we have a motion and we have a second to pave some streets. So let's do a roll call.
Reese?
Yes.
Schlag?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Thanks, everybody. That takes us to new business. City council will be asked to consider a motion to establish a beach parking committee, or sorry, beach sticker parking committee. Um, right? And appoint one to two city council members to serve on the committee for the design of the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three beach parking sticker. Now, this is like fun stuff. So, uh, do we need volunteers for this before we do a motion and a second, or this is just to agree that we're going to have a committee?
I think this is, um, previous councils have always wanted to be very involved in the sticker, uh, design choosing and formulation. Uh, we've received, in the past two, uh, go-arounds, we've con- contacted other designers. We have about twenty to twenty-five, uh, designs that we've considered in the past. So we have a number of designs that are waiting just to be, to be reviewed. And previous council members, usually there was two of them, um, wanted to be part of that committee, and there was a variety of staff that, city staff that assists.
I jump in as well. Uh, it sounds exciting. All right, anybody, any artistic people or I'd say anyone with kids that like stickers. Chris, I think you've got little kids. They might want some sticker input.
This is Jeff Arnold. I would serve on that committee.
All right, there's one.
I would Jeff on that. I'd do it too.
All right, we got two. There we go. We've got sticker people. All right. So we just, are we looking for a motion second to a?
Sure, just to appoint them to the sticker committee.
Mister Arnold, Mister Campbell to the sticker committee. I like it.
This is Steve Schlag. So moved.
George Sleeper, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Mister Jeff Arnold, Mister Chris Campbell to work on the twenty twenty-one to twenty-three beach parking sticker. Thanks. Well, I guess we need to allow some public comment here to make sure, again, six three seven zero seven seven seven. Um, while we're waiting, public, any other council, uh, comments? Anybody want to deviate from the lighthouse motif? Nope. So I'd see if someone dared me.
I, I would just say, would like the final couple of designs come to city council for city council to vote on it or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. Great question, though.
I, I remember from my previous, uh, experience on city council, we don't like the long skinny ones because the ice scrapers tear them apart. So I've experienced with these stickers.
Exactly. No, I said I was on one of them before too. So it's a fun process.
It's, it's, it's a good topic. All right. No, no comments called in?
No, sir.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Schlag?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Thank you, everybody, and thanks Jeff and Chris. And next, city council will be asked to consider establishing a farm market stakeholder committee comprised of city council members, local merchants, uh, local farmers, uh, the farm market manager, and city staff to review the South Haven farm market operations for the twenty twenty-one and future seasons. And really, we're just, we don't have to actually pick, we're not going to have the members selected tonight. We just wanted to bring the group up to speed that we're going to be looking into how we're running the farmer's market for next year. So I'm, Kate, if you want to get a little more detail, then we can motion it up.
Sure. We have, um, well, we've had some concerns that, uh, perhaps the farm market is going larger than what it was initially, in, initially anticipated to be. And then, of course, for COVID, we really restricted down to just farmers. Um, so we've seen, uh, very full markets and very skims, slim markets. I think that we would like to, considering the concerns that have been voiced, um, from a number of different people, uh, putting together a stakeholder committee to look at the farm market, its current goal, and, uh, what we'd like to see going forward is, is appropriate at this time. We've kind of had, um, very different years from back to back. And that's what we're looking to put together here is a wide variety of people who would have impact and be impacted by. So, um, again, not sure, trying to choose anybody else on the stakeholder committee, but just trying to see if there's any council members who would be willing to serve on it.
And I, I'll, I'll jump ahead of time saying I'm already going to be one of the people. So, uh, I, I've been involved in this and have had several contacts prior, so I will be one of the folks involved. Um, why don't we also, I'll just mention, public comment, six three seven zero seven seven seven. I know we may have some folks calling in on this. So if there's interest, why don't we get a motion and a second, then we'll hear from council members, your thoughts.
Uh, this is Jeff Arnold. I've, uh, you know, just asking questions of downtown merchants, or actually, I haven't spoken to downtown merchants, but I've asked the people in Ward to their thoughts on this. And I think it's real important that we protect the downtown merchants, that I, I would not like to see a lot of out-of-town vendors selling products that directly compete with the brick and mortar shops that are, that are here. I certainly would love to have, um, the farmer's market be a success story like the, the Gem Shop, that those folks came and they, they had a booth there in the farmer's market and they used it to, to, uh, I don't know if they purchased or they rent a brick and mortar. And so, you know, I would love to see that farmer's market work as an incubator to start small businesses in town. That, that's really the, the vision I have for our farmer's market. In addition to supporting the farmers and getting us lots of good vegetables.
I would tend to agree. So would you like to make a motion to, uh, establish this stakeholder committee?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we will establish a stakeholders committee.
Steve Schlag, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Um, why don't we listen to any of the public comments?
We have one so far.
All right, so, yep, set them up.
Hello, caller. You're on with the council on the farm market topic. Please state your name and your address. You'll be given five minutes. We'll give you about a one-minute warning, just so you know you're not about to run over your time.
Thank you. Cheryl Overholzer.
Okay, go ahead, Cheryl.
Evening, Cheryl.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Overholzer, and I am an agricultural grower here in the South Haven community. I do feel that it is very valued that we establish this committee, um, to monitor not only the vendors that are in there, because it is primarily a farm market. And some of the vendors have been taking away from the agricultural, uh, pronunciation in our community. And I feel that it is necessary that we have some type of board that is governing it outside of just the farm market manager to ensure that we are representing the community as well as our agricultural presence in the southwest Michigan area.
Great. Well, hopefully you'll, we'll keep these meetings posted and you can come and get involved with us. So thanks for the call.
I would love to. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more. Hello, caller. You're on the line with the council on the farmer's market topic. If you can state your name and your address, you'll be, you'll have five minutes to address the council. I'll give you one minute warning before your time runs out.
Thank you. My name is Anna Super. I'm from High Evergreen Biflo Farm. Our address is five seven five two eight Sixteenth Avenue, Grand Junction address. And I've been at the farmer's market for three years. The last two years we've had the farmer's market, people would come from all over the place. They'd come from out of state and they brag about how great our farmer's market was. Yes, we had vendors who sold jewelries and popcorn and all kinds of thing and donuts and everything, but they brought in people from all over the place. Now we're down to about twenty vendors. We only have farmers, and we don't want to infringe with the dear business people in South Haven. But the people come in and they shop there first, and they bring in bags and bags of stuff from the pet shop and from the hardware store and from every place else. The farmer's market is bringing in people. It's not infringing on the businesses in South Haven. And I've been in South Haven for thirty-five years, and it bothers me that the businesses feel that we, as the farmer's market and the people who sell those homemade jewelries and all of that, that they would be infringing on their business. I think that that is totally wrong. And this year, the farmer's market was really down. I mean, you know, there was no people, there's no vendors. On Wednesdays, we might have twelve vendors, and on Saturday, we might have twenty, twenty-two. So it is really, it's the pits. That's all I have to say. And I'm going to continue being a member of the farmer's market. But you guys should go around, whoever you elect to be on the committee, they should come down, they should introduce themselves, and they should talk to us. And so we know who to give the feedback. We just giving it to Brad, and he says, well, I'm sorry, the higher ups tell me this and to tell me that. He's just, you know, an in-between man. So we cannot complain to him or we cannot get the answers from him because he doesn't make the, the rules like whoever in the city does. We don't even know who the farmer market manager is. Supposedly it's a lady. I don't know what her name is. Nobody seems to know what her name is, and she should be down talking to us. She should be down talking to the people. That's all I have to say. And I hope you guys do a good job of selecting good qualified people who will, you know, do something for us. And Mister Arnold, believe me, we are not infringing with the, with the people in the business in South Haven. We're not. They're digging, they were bringing in more business, they're bringing in more people to the farmer's market who go shop downtown and who spend their money there. But if that's how they feel, I guess we can't change their minds. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope that you guys, I hope we have a better farmer's market next year than we had this year.
Me too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys have a good night. Thank you. Bye-bye.
We'll save you one more.
Okay. One more call, Colin.
Hello, caller. You're on with the council on the farm market topic. If you can state your name and your address, you'll be given five minutes. I'll give you a one-minute warning before your time runs out. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lindy DeVries, and I am a longtime market vendor. And because I was at the market for so long, it allowed me to open up a business. It was a good stepping stone for that. Um, I've been in contact with a lot of you at the council regarding the market and what was going on with COVID this year, trying to make adoptions to see if we might be able to work this year. And I've talked with Kate and Sue Brock and many of you about the future of the market and how I believe that a full market really benefits our downtown and it brings people into town. And I would like to express interest in being on the committee and helping out however I can because I really do feel like a full and prosperous market really does benefit our downtown and does not detract from downtown merchants. That is all. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Lindy. We appreciate it. We'll be in touch.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. IT says no more callers.
Okay, very good. All right. So any other council comments? You've heard some of the public comments. Um, again, we're just going to dig into it, and we've, we've had concerns from merchants, so.
I, I do see, there are plus and minuses to it. When, when we have people bringing in jewelry, when we have people bringing in clothing. I have personally talked to other people in town, like the bakery, when we have bakers showing up that our, our Golden Brown Bakery could, uh, is going to lose profits from. Then I think that could affect, um, potential downtown businesses. That's why I think the committee makes the most sense. These things, you know, if, if they're being evaluated would, obviously, we have something in downtown, we wouldn't want to bring something into the market that would go against it or, or take business away from the brick and mortar stores. Um, I think the committee is a great idea.
Very good. Thank you. And that has been my goal the whole time, really, is to, to really come up with things that complement the downtown, not compete with it. And if they're unique, like the example of the rock shop is a great example. Well, if you've got something unique and we could give you a stepping stone to give it a try, great. If it's, again, if it's something that's not occurring in our downtown, this committee or this, ultimately, the goal is to be able to have an easy way to get these folks there. But just something you as a council should be thinking about too is, you know, how big, I mean, you're hearing from your merchants, you know, we hear complaints about we want more parking. Well, this occurs on a Saturday, one of our busiest shopping days, and so. Well, this occurs on a Saturday, one of our busiest shopping days, and so if we get it too big, we basically are creating a whole other problem with taking up existing parking. So we, you know, the goal initially was to create a place for farmers. And so the one caller said, you know, getting, you know, their feedback. We are talking about creating a survey right off the bat to give to the merchants down there, and really just getting, giving them a way to talk to us and say, well, what would you like to see? More of, less of? How do we diversify our farmers? I mean, I'd like to make it easier to get more farmers in there. So maybe farmers are given a lesser cost. I don't know, I'm just talking. But again, we want, we want to get their feedback. We want to ensure we've got lots of farmers and maybe more farmers, and then how do we round that out with businesses that are complementing, not competing? So we've got a motion, we've got a second. If there's no other comments, let's roll call it, and we'll have our committee put together.
Sleeper? Yes. Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yeah.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. That takes us to the city manager search update. And this one, I will not talk to Kate, because Kate happens to be one of our two finalists, if you didn't tune in. We had interviews this past week. Kim Wise is getting, oh, look at there, she is just in time to join us. So Kate Hosier, Tim Wolfe, are our two finalists. We had really seven great candidates, really all interviewed very well. At the end, we had a couple that really just bubbled from the top. So at this point in time, and again, I want to thank Ross Stein, Stephanie Timmer, Claudia Maddox, and Bob Straits for joining us in that process, and Kim for all of her organizational skills and making this all, you know, turn out. So Kim, you want to walk us through kind of what, we need to get a motion, I know tonight, to basically get these two candidates interviewed by the council. That's one step. And then Kim will walk us through some thoughts on additional public input. And, you know, back post, you know, pre-COVID days, we would have public coming in and, you know, interview, you know, public interviews and whatnot. That's a little tricky in this world, but Kim, we've got a few thoughts on how we could still get some public questions, comments coming forward. So I'll give it to Kim to update us a little bit on her thoughts.
Sure, thank you. So what the mayor was talking about was, in the past, we've had members of the community, some key stakeholders come in and do meet and greets with finalists when you were doing city manager searches. With COVID, that's really not a reality of being able to bring in quite a few people to the chambers and having them do lunches, things like that. So we were brainstorming some different ideas on what we could do. And one of the ideas was I could reach out to the public, just open it up to the public. If they had questions that they wanted to ask the finalists, they could submit those questions to me. I would review the questions, select some, you know, get rid of duplicates, but select a few questions, and then allow council to include those questions during the finalist interviews. That way, the public would be able to ask their questions. Again, these interviews would be broadcasted, so they would be able to see the responses to those as well. So we'd like your thoughts on that, still being able to involve the public with the interview process. So if anyone has any thoughts on that?
George?
This is George Sleeper. Kim, I think that's a good idea, a good way to still get community input and still be mindful of people's health.
This is Jeff Arnold. I like it also. And Kim, I'm wondering, what are your thoughts on allowing call-in questions? I was just thinking, if a situation were to arise, maybe the public would want to ask a specific question that might have changed from the time they would submit a written question, unless you think there's pitfalls with the phone calls.
Yeah, I do have a little concern about just having random questions coming in that we're not screening ahead of time. Plus, I want to be mindful of council's time commitment to this. If we're doing this during the final interview, we'd like to keep those interviews to an hour, and if we allow call-ins, it may start to exceed that time limit.
That makes sense. And I suppose we could always still accept emails that you could still vet for us, you know, up to right before.
Yes, absolutely. So I did talk to the two candidates that the search, that the interview panel would like to recommend to you, and they gave me some dates that they're available for final interviews. But again, council will have to make that approval to bring those two forward as the finalists, and I'll let the mayor handle that part. But just to talk a little bit about, once we do get to the finalist interviews, we would try to get both interviews in on the same night, and then we would go into deliberations, scoring them, and then making a motion to have myself and the mayor do negotiations with the selected candidate. So once you do decide on a date for the finalist interviews, I will, as a reminder to all of you folks, I will resend you the most recent city manager's contracts, so you'll have time to review that. If there's things that you want to change on that, revise, you send me your notes, things like that. So then that way we can start working on that ahead of time. I'll also reach out to the candidates, get them scheduled for their interviews, and I'd also like to schedule them time to meet with department heads here in the city. I think that's important, that they spend a little time getting to know the leadership team here at the city as well. And based on the availabilities that the candidates gave me, I think at the October 19th council meeting, we will be able to, at that point, have council approve an employment agreement with our new city manager.
And Kim, you were looking at possibly doing these as soon as next week, is that right?
Sure. If it works out for everybody, we have dates that the candidates gave me were Tuesday, September 29th, Wednesday, September 30th, Thursday, October 8th, if you wanted to go out two weeks. So if all of you folks would be willing to take a look at your calendars and let me know if any or all of those dates work, we can start getting some interviews scheduled.
Wednesday, the 30th does not work for me.
Okay.
Are you available Tuesday?
Tuesdays and Thursdays are fine.
I've got, I got three, I've got Jeff a thumbs up for Tuesday, Steve, I'm a thumbs up for Tuesday. Letitia is a thumbs down, Joe's a thumbs up.
How about Thursday, the 8th?
Thursday works, Thursday works. Everybody's up but Letitia. Letitia?
Mayor, I know you talked about Fridays, you're not necessarily in town, but would you be able to do, they also gave me Friday, the 2nd and Friday, the 9th is dates that work for them. I'm not sure if that works for you.
As long as you can start them after 7:00.
Oh, that's going to be, okay.
Welcome to COVID.
Okay, I will take a look at this, and I will email the group to find out what works best for everybody, and we will get these scheduled. We could look at doing a Saturday. Candidate Tim Wolfe really preferred to stay away from that because his kids are involved with some sports, but if we need to make it a Saturday event, we may have to look at that.
Sounds good. So you'll just work on emailing the, we'll just send out some dates to the group, and we'll see who's around when.
Okay, sounds good. Will do.
And Monday was out, right? A week from tonight's out?
Correct.
Okay. All right, perfect. All right, so at this time, the recommendation of the interview committee was Ms. Kate Hosier and Mr. Timothy Wolfe for our finalists. So we would just need a motion and a second, and then we can vote it up, discuss it, whatever the groups desire.
This is Jeff Arnold. I'll make a motion that we move forward with Kate Hosier and Tim Wolfe.
Steve Schlag, I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. I guess we should probably allow some public comment on this. So 637-0777 would be the number, call in. Council comments at this time, whilst we wait for the public.
Steve Schlag, I'll just state that I'm okay on any day other than.
Other than which day start, was the Wednesday?
Wednesdays are really tough for me, so I'm available anytime other than that.
Gotcha. And Letitia, it sounds like Thursdays are out for you?
Yeah, I work on Thursdays, but you guys don't have to hold it up for me. I don't have to be there. If everybody else can be there, I mean, I don't want to inconvenience everyone else to have to come on a Friday or Saturday.
We'll be there. We just, just got to get everybody in the same room, same time. So you want to there. Maybe in the evening, but it's good. We'll get there. So we'll figure out a time. Joe, what you got?
I'm open anytime, but I don't want to get a divorce, because eight, nine, and 10, it's my anniversary. No way, no how can I tell my wife I'm not going to go away with her that weekend. So that's the only time I'm out. I'm sorry, that's not flexible.
Smart man, Joe.
Hey, good man. That's a good point. That's my wife's birthday on the 8th. I guess I better skip that night, too.
I'd have to see these. Honestly, my son's got varsity soccer, too, so I'm trying to detract that and other things. So if I could see those again on paper and compare with his schedule.
All right, we'll send out an email and see who's got the craziest life. All right, any public comments on this one?
No, sir.
We've got nothing. Perfect. We've got a motion and a second to send along Mr. Tim Wolfe and Ms. Kate Hosier as our finalists for city manager. Let's roll call, please.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yeah.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper? Yes. Smith?
Yes. That takes us to item 12. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. Again, this is the time to call, 637-0777. If you have anything you'd like to discuss that is not currently on the agenda, and we'll give a minute or so for people to call through. We still have Natalie here. Natalie, thanks again for coming. Appreciate all you guys are doing, so. Is there a secret time, Kim? This is the longest minute.
Just a little bit more. No callers, sir.
All right. No callers. Let's go ahead and move on to city manager comments. Kate?
Well, thank you, sir. This weekend, there was an excellent memorial out front here to honor the life and the sacrifice by Colonel, I'm sorry, Corporal Earl Janosky. There was a ceremony that was put together by the American Legion, which included the Hooligan Flight Crew coming across at around noon, I'm sorry, around 11:00 a.m., as well as Congressman Upton and Medal of Honor winner Jim McLean. So Mr. Janosky's name has been added to the Korean War Memorial out front. It was an excellent memorial. Look for my blog, my blog. We'll have pictures from Tom Renner from that day. Maybe you've noticed the new mural going up that's on the south wall of the Michigan Movie Theater here, and actually, that wall is owned by Chemical Bank. That is Project Pathways, which is a organization at South Haven High School to promote kids incorporating into the business community and learning a career path. A couple really neat young ladies put that together with Chemical Bank and a local artist, and two local artists to get that done. So again, that's just started this weekend, and we'll be finishing up here shortly. I know we wanted to have a few topics brought up by the city clerk, just reminders about our elections. Travis, you want to explain what's going on with our ballots and where they can bring their ballots or their applications?
Yep. So ballots, for folks who have already requested an absentee ballot, will be mailed out by the end of the day on Thursday. So if you see a light on here at about 11 o'clock the next couple of nights, that will be me. The drop box in the parking lot behind City Hall on Quaker Street has been updated, so it has red signage on it. Now there's a ballot drop on both sides of it, so the side you see in the parking lot and the side you see through the road. That's a 24-hour locked drop box that's available for folks to make payments or drop anything else off, but it's also used by individuals to drop off ballots. So we've marked that now, so that folks know they can drop them there anytime. You can also use the other drop box up here at the front door of City Hall on Phoenix Street as well. That's open 24 hours. And then inside of City Hall, there's the locked box that we have out front or out in the lobby, and that's open during business hours when City Hall's open.
Okay, that's all I have, sir.
Okay, very good. Travis, thank you ahead of time. I know you're doing a lot, and it's going to be, get busier for you, so thank you for that. Any questions for Kate or Travis? All's quiet. Very good. All right, city council comments. Let's start with Mr. Steve Schlag tonight.
I don't have any comments tonight, other than it was nice to see all the awards given to our local police officers. I thought their bravery shined through, and I appreciate them 110%. Thank you.
Well stated. Thank you. Chris Campbell?
I've got a cold. Other than that, no comment.
All right. Oh, very good. Take care of yourself. Joe Reeser? Good evening.
Good evening. My thoughts and prayers are with the students and the faculty, the teachers in our schools, that they're all safe and the kids can learn in a safe manner. I know it's challenging. So I want to thank everyone, most importantly, the teachers, for sticking their neck out and trying to do the best they can under these conditions.
Well stated. Thank you. George Sleeper?
I want to appreciate, I want to thank all the people who phoned in to give us comments tonight, and also those that are watching remotely. I do appreciate also Chief Thompson and the South Haven Police Department, and I want to thank the chief for recognizing the outstanding contribution made to the community by her officers. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey?
No comment for me tonight.
Very good. Thank you. And Ms. Letitia?
No comment.
All right, very good.
Mayor, before your comment, I guess we do have a caller. I don't know if you want to take that caller, if you want to just proceed.
During public comment? From public comment?
I think so. But I guess I didn't, we had checked to see if they were still on here, but.
We're still here. Go ahead and just patch it through.
Go ahead and pull it through.
We've got a public comment. Sorry, the joys of technology and phones.
Hello caller, you're on with the council. You'll have five minutes to speak, and if you can state your name and your address, I'll give you a one-minute warning.
Okay, and this is just general comment, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are you going to tell me when to start talking?
Yep, you can go ahead and start talking now.
Just give us your name and address, and all that stuff.
Hello, my name is Christine Yu. I live at 123 Superior Street in South Haven, and I wanted to talk about climate change and global warming. I sent a letter to council earlier today, and you may not have had time to read it. I noticed last week that we had smoke from the wildfires in the west. I recently moved here from Oregon and have experienced the burning forests and really bad air quality, and it just seems like it's getting worse and worse. And I know that we are all responsible for climate change in terms of growing greenhouse gases. And so I also noticed, at the same time, that there was a city vehicle idling in the street while the driver was tending to landscaping. And I feel like it's a waste of fuel, first of all, and secondly, it generates a lot of CO2 emissions. So if a vehicle idles more than 10 seconds, really, the vehicle needs to be turned off. And the impact of idling nationwide per year is 30 million tons of CO2. And I know it's insignificant compared to the CO2 generated worldwide, and it's low-hanging fruit. It's easy to do. It's easy to educate people and say, hey, just turn off your cars, like you turn off the lights when you leave your house. So I would be interested in having city council consider your house. So I would be interested in having city council consider a policy um to not to forbid idling within the city of South Haven for government and private vehicles. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, I am going to uh just.
Thank you, caller.
All right. Last but not least, so I just want to take a moment just one, thank the community for their patience during this current pandemic. I mean, it is, it's still very challenging for a lot of folks I know right now. So I just want to thank everybody for their their patience. And also just remind them that while we're focused on high water, we're dealing with COVID, that we continue to have priorities that focus on things such as housing, economic development, growing the community, working on year-round population, all that stuff that really is kind of at the backbones of what we're all sitting up here trying to get done. So there's some not so much fun stuff we're dealing with, but we're also still, you know, keenly aware of the priorities of this community. So if there are issues, if there are concerns, to feel free to call any of us. Our phone numbers are conveniently located on your utility bills or email us, text us. I mean, we're still available to talk, to communicate. I mean, I'll I'll meet you in person if you want to talk. I don't want people to feel as though we're distant, we can still communicate. So I just want that to be, you know, very clear that we as a council are interested in hearing from you and we hope you're still feeling like you can, you know, bring your ideas forward. Um, on that note, I would like to also just suggest to this council that we resume meeting in person in October, now that our students are back in school and the public's getting out and about. So I would throw that out that possibly in October, we get back to meeting in person down here in council chambers. So we'll send out an email on that, see if we can get some consensus. Um, I'd also like to just again, thank Chief Thompson and all of our officers for all you do every day to keep us safe. Um, and on that note, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Steve Schleck, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
George Sleeper, I'll second.
Very good. Motion and a second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Yes, thank you all. Have a wonderful evening. Be safe. Chris, feel better. We are adjourned.